If I could ask Clerk Segrist to call the roll.
All right, Trustee Anthony.
Present.
Trustee Foster, not present. Trustee Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Let the record reflect that Clerk Segrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good evening.
Trustee Snyderman.
I am here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Call for a motion to approve the adoption of the agenda with the following changes. First, we're going to be adding after payment of the bills and before the consent calendar, a special hearing.
Moved.
Well, John, there's one other change I need to make, sir. Give me a second here. So, a special hearing, item one, which the board should have received a package this afternoon as well on. And then, we're going to move item number four up to item number zero, so zero and one can happen or occur sequentially as they should. So, the motion is, again, to modify the agenda, to add the special hearing, and move item four to item zero.
Moved.
Support?
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Very good. We have one set of minutes for approval. Call for a motion to approve the minutes of September 25th, 2018, board meeting.
So, support?
Those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Michael. Now would be the time in our agenda for citizens' non-agenda items and comments. If there's anybody in the audience this evening that would like to make a comment on something that's not on the agenda this evening, now would be the time to make those comments. Mr. Miller, please. If there's anybody else who would like to make public comment for an item that's not on the agenda this evening, now would be the time to make those comments. Mr. Miller, please.
Yeah, George Miller. Probably in the process of being taken care of, but it's been lingering for some time. Couple houses on Herbie Street and over on Yost Road. There's a factory there. Incident happened years ago where some kids got in a truck well and drowned. That particular truck well is flooded here within the last week or two. I'd like to know why it wasn't ever backfilled with sand evidently. Also moving forward a little bit, on the 29th of April, it's on public record evidently, he had two or three emergency calls on the 29th. And on the 29th, he had a call about noisy dogs. On, at an address that I want not to disclose right at the moment. But that address, you've been out there many times. Many times you haven't found the dogs barking. I'd like to know why the protocol telling me that you have to call on every call. But when there's an emergency phone call, when somebody's in an accident or a holdup, for example, some of the manpower could be on the other side of town and then to respond to this north side of town, for example. Cars tied up on the south side, and you could possibly use the manpower on the north side. I'd like to know why your priorities are not different on that. Every, when there's a, somebody dying in a car wreck or, or a holdup or something, every minute or two means everything. I'd like to know why, why it can't be changed. I've addressed this issue many times.
Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like a follow-up on that, on that, on the next.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Thank you. Ma'am, we'd ask that if you would, please identify your name and address. You don't have to, but we'd like you to. And then, limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name is Joanne Newbacher. I'm from Brookside subdivision, and the issue involves the sidewalk project that was completed in our sub this year. The only problem we're having, and I shouldn't have said only, the problem we're having is there were several accessways from the sidewalk to the street that were cemented. Those were removed with notes that they were to be sodded and brought back, you know, at least to a normal neat-looking area. Right now, every time there's an issue of where they pulled up these cements, there is weed. It just, it's like it brings blight to our neighborhood. And the school kids, who were used to boarding their buses at certain areas, now they have to walk around or tromp over lawns of people to get to the bus. And I have lived in this subdivision for over 40 years. I've walked the subs so many times. Everybody knows me and happy my dog. And we just, we enjoy our sub. We've lived here long. It's a nice sub, but now we have blight, which was created by this issue. Now, I talked with Erica probably about two months ago because there was an issue where I was overbuild on my slab of sidewalk that was replaced. And I said, "Why did you pull out all of them areas?" I mean, when I walk, that means I gotta walk further, and maybe that's a good thing, but there's mud, there's uneven areas that I could fall. And so, we just want to know when this is gonna be completed. Could we have the cement that was pulled up put back down again because that would create the, what our sub used to look like before this project? And we are, most of us are very, very proud of our neighborhood, and we want to keep it nice instead of it having blight issues like it has now. So, I'd like some kind of responses to when and what will be done.
And if you have other neighbors that'd like to make similar comments, please, don't repeat the same thing, but if you have a new spin on it, please do add. And then, when you're all done speaking from Brookside, then I'd like to make a quick comment.
My name's Jacqueline Kasege. I live on Fox Valley and also in Brookside. Same issues as her, but the bus stops where, are where the sidewalk is missing. And now, my kindergartner and several other little kids have to stand in the middle of a driveway instead of being safe on the sidewalk to wait for the bus. Or they have to walk out, out in the street and around the bus to get on it because there's no safe, straight path to get on the bus. So, we would really like the sidewalks back. And I was told the same thing when I called before the even sidewalks were even removed, that the reason that the bus stops would just have to move. That's what I was told. And I don't think that is a fair or safe.
Very good. Thank you. Would anybody else like to make comments from Brookside?
Jennifer Hengish, I also live in Brookside. And one of the reasons that I believe they replaced or tore out sidewalk was to make it ADA compatible, compliant. I have pictures on my phone. There will, the sidewalk across from my house is ADA compliant. My sidewalk is not. Makes no sense to me. There's a handicap person in the neighborhood. His sidewalks were made compliant. Across the street is compliant, but he's on a four-corner. The other two corners, they left them alone. So, I appreciate that there's still sidewalk there, but their reasoning makes absolutely no sense to me.
Somebody else like to make comment from Brookside? Mrs. Olson, would you like to speak? Please, please.
My name is Sheila Olson. I'm the president of Brookside Village. And first of all, I apologize that I'm so late. My husband and I had a transfer of our grandchild, and therefore, that's the reason he's not here. But, yes, I'm glad to see some of our residents here to voice their concern. I've heard many complaints about the removal of the sidewalks and the unsafeness and the challenge some of our handicap people in our neighborhood have getting around. And although we met yesterday and kind of went over some of the areas that were impacted, we were still not satisfied with the reason we were given for the ADA compliance. And we did check, we cover, we're in charge of Brookside 1, 2, 3, and 4, and West. And my husband did check West, and there was about four in West that were removed as well. So, we're hoping that with the challenge that some of the handicap people in our neighborhood have, as Jennifer mentioned, as I mentioned, I mentioned yesterday, some of our moms with strollers, we have some elderly people who walk with canes, and with, currently as it stands, with the rut and all the rain we've had, with mud, it really makes stepping into those areas unsafe. So, I'm sure some of the residents have already voiced some of those concerns, but as the president, I felt the need to get up here and at least go over them and present them to you.
Thank you very much. I do appreciate it, Sheila. So, confirming, yeah, we did meet. It was myself, Township Engineer, as well as Erica Hidalgo. The next steps or the plan is you and your husband are gonna try to produce a list for, you know, each of those areas where the big, the greatest pain was felt, or at least from what's been shared with you so far. And then, we are going to be coming to one of your HOA meetings in the very near future. I don't know when that's gonna happen.
Our meeting is Thursday.
Okay. I'm not available this week, so.
The gentleman, Bill, I believe, what's his name, that accompanied me Thursday.
Right, yeah.
He did indicate that that was probably too soon to make, but that November's meeting would be more relevant.
Yes. All right. And the 50,000-foot view, what we're going to be sharing with you is the technical reasons on why what has happened, why we did what we did. As far as laying the appropriate sods and bringing everything back, it's going to happen. And then, there may be opportunities for specific special cases where crossways may be created that aren't there today to replace in very special and unique cases, not in all cases. So, there's a lot behind the scene here happening that is extremely technical, and we are, we have to adhere to the laws, right? And we will. At the end of the day, we want you to be able to understand why we did what we did and maybe not agree with it, but at least appreciate what happened. And if there's special cases, we'll sort that out later. Okay? Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any additional public comment? Okay, seeing none. Call for a Treasurer Slavens. Could we have a motion to pay the bills?
So, Mr. Supervisor, I make a motion that we pay the bills.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, now, we're going to move into our special hearing. Let's see. We have here a petition to appeal massage establishment license suspension based on Chapter 18, Article 3, Section 18-92 for Tomy Acupressure Massage located at 3,800 Lilly Road, Canton, Michigan, 48187. In terms of the summary, would you like me to review the summary, or did you want to do that, Michael?
Go for it.
Okay. In terms of a summary, on September 7th, 2018, an individual reported solicitation for a sex act during massage at Tomy Acupressure Massage, which resulted in the business owner being cited for violation of township ordinance and a criminal sexual conduct investigation submission to the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office for review. The individual in question was not listed on the application for the business in violation of Sections 18-86H and 19-91 of the Code of Ordinances. The investigation indicated that the individual is not a licensed massage therapist in accordance with state law and Section 18-86I. Additionally, Section 18-92Z allows for revocation of, or suspension of a license where any employee of the licensee, including the massage therapist, is engaged in any conduct which violates any of the state or local laws of ordinances or ordinances at the licensee's place of business in conduct of the licensee's business. Okay? There was also a package sent out to the board with some historical information. Trustee Snyderman confirmed he has had an opportunity to review that. Trustee Hudak, Graham Hudak, have you had a chance to look at the historical information?
Yes.
Okay.
The same thing you're writing.
There's a little packet there, and there's another one with incidents going back to 2011 at the site.
Yep.
It's in the paper copy. All right. Very good. In terms of process this evening, let me go through that very briefly. Okay. That's exactly what I was looking for. Thank you, Treasurer Slavens. Okay, the process this evening's going to be the appellate business owner or his representative, which is Mr. Rick Wong, is this this evening, will be given an opportunity to speak for 15 minutes to make a case to the board while denial, why denial of the license should be overturned. Part of this 15 minutes may be reserved for rebuttal. This includes an opening statement, argument, closing statement. Board members may ask questions during or after the presentation. Then, either myself or Clerk Segrist, or we have Officer Trader with us this evening can answer any questions the board may have. Then, the appellate business owner may respond, rebut to the, to what is spoken if they have reserved any of their original 15 minutes. So, your 15 minutes is in total. And then, from that, once we've had the back and forth, the board will be making a decision, and we have three different model resolutions to decide from. One is have the revocation stand as is. Have the revocation stand as a pending outcome of a current legal proceeding that's underway, I believe in the 35th District Court, not in the 35th District Court. I'm sorry?
Downtown Detroit.
Okay, downtown Detroit Circuit Court, or, thank you. Or our third option is to reverse our position and allow the business to operate as is. So, that is the process and our decisions to make this evening, sir. Mr. Wong, with all three motions?
I'm gonna open the hearing.
Oh, we haven't opened it.
Yeah.
It's on the next page, right there. Okay.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board open the hearing for the appeal of the temporary suspension for the massage establishment license for Tomy Massage at 7:19 PM.
Second. Those in favor of the motion to open as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Diane, again. That's what you were pointing at, and I didn't realize it. Okay. All right, sir. Mr. Wong, please.
Okay, good evening. My name is Rick Wong. I own Wong Consulting. I do a lot of consulting work for the Asian community because there's a language barrier, and I've been in the States for a long time, and so I speak both Mandarin Chinese and English. Mr. Lang, Danny Lang retained my services doing his application process, actually. He's from New York. He's traveled back and forth. Unfortunately, he cannot be with us today because of family matters back at home in China. So, he's in, mainly in China right now. He'll return on the 18th. He did retain the attorney to represent him in regards to the ticket that was issued, the misdemeanor. His attorney's name's Mark Hart, and he cannot be present tonight either because of family matters. So, with that being said, with regards to the incident, Mr. Lang was not in town, so he's kind of absentee owner. He purchased the business as an investment, and he see the Tomy Massage's been in the community for a long time. It's been operating for a long time. So, he decided to make that investment, and he owned the business for about a year. This is the first incident that happened. When the incident happened, he was not in town, and he was called, and also because I do consulting work for the business, and I was called, and I was at the place of business doing translating work for the police officer and also the owner. So, I kind of understand the situation a little bit better than everybody else. So, the incident did happen. Unfortunately, the therapist who performed the massage, because she is not licensed, and she was worried about her own personal safety and what she would be punished with because she's not licensed, so she decided to run away from the business. So, therefore, the owner cannot provide their side of the story. But the incident did, the customer that come in, the filed a complaint, I'm not, I'm sure there's another side story to this because he did use his credit card for the method of payment, and he did leave a $10 tip, and then I think I have a copy of the documents, and hopefully you guys can see it. So, and then, so basically, he paid for the one-hour massage and left the $10 tip and supposedly came here and made a complaint. So, I'm not understanding what exactly happened, and because we can't really communicate or find the massage therapist that was there, so we're trying to locate her as we speak, we did provide the information to the police department with her name, social security number, amount of other things, her legal status. But that's something we have in hand. But since the incident happened, Mr. Lang did try to correct the mistake and then retained services of a therapist that is fully licensed. So, he's trying to make the adjustments. He did sign the three-year lease at this property, so he's hoping he's giving a second chance to operate the business. He understands the legal ramification of it. He's willing to take, to do whatever he can to make the necessary changes to comply with the state, the city code. So, because he's not here, he'll be back on the 18th. He had a court date on the 2nd, October 2nd. His attorney had to reschedule that to the 30th of this month.
There is a pending action in Detroit. The, and it's, to follow up on a misdemeanor that was written against the owner.
For hiring a therapist without license, correct.
Therapist is gone. The current owner has owned the facility.
About a year. The business has been open for, I think, over five, six years, maybe.
Do we have a record of that change of ownership? Occupancy, would that be requirement?
Yeah, I can follow the, Lee Ping and her partner was the owner of the massage business from the start. And then, as of two years ago, because they had their fallout, they asked me to help because I'm in the community. So, I purchased the business myself, and then, I really cannot be there on a day-to-day basis and understand the problem of running the business because I cannot be there. So, I decided to sell the business. And Mr. Lang was from out of town. It was through another relationship was introduced, and then, and he purchased the business, and I helped him with the application process.
So, Pangs were the prior owner.
Lee Ping was the owner. I owned it for less than a year.
And then, now, Mr. Lang is current.
Yeah. And that was the process. And so, I understand the business, and I understand, you know, it's hard to run that business because of the bad reputation and, but I took over the business because I see that they had longevity and they, I knew a lot of their therapists from the previous owner, and that's what I kept as a, as a therapist when I took over. But when, when they decide to move on and leave and over their own, and I really cannot run the business without having somebody there to trust, so, and that's why I decided to sell the business. So, that was my involvement in the whole process. So, I kind of understand that business a little bit, and then...
It lies there about nine minutes, by my calculation. Are there any board questions, comments? Stephen, please.
Yes, sir. We have a list in front of us of a history of violations, and it goes back to 2011. When did these sales occur? Your sale, your purchase, and then your sale of it?
It was back in, I think, like, mid-2017.
Little over a year ago, probably summer of 2017.
I didn't have it for that long. And when I realized I cannot keep the current employees, and it doesn't, and then, it's more of a transition because they, they're partying, and then, and I kind of, kind of helped them out, and I know there's opportunity for me to sell the business later if I don't see it fit.
I mean, there's a history for seven years now of things happening, and more than one time, it was for violations of, not, I'm just talking about the business in general, is, the history is for improper conduct of a sexual nature, so I think it's more than just the one time that was suggested today. So, I'll reserve other comments for after the clerk speaks.
Funny, I have a question. So, in terms of process, so they're only going to court for a non-licensed therapist? Right. So, then, basically, because, I mean, they're not going to court for the incident because we could not find the therapist then? Is that correct? Is that the only reason?
Please speak up, officer, to clarify, please.
Sergeant Trader, the criminal side is still being reviewed by looking at the property. Look at the seventh. So, do you know the complaint, start looking into some other things, and that's why the board...
Okay, so that's...
So, if I may, real quick, since, since anybody watching on a recorded or on cable would not have heard a word of what we just said, I will repeat into the microphone that I want to make sure, from a process standpoint, since we have 15 minutes allotted, and then 15 minutes for the township's side, that questions directed at the township might be better reserved for that period of time.
Agreed.
So, we could maybe re-ask that question or clarify the, the difference between the criminal investigations when it's our turn to talk, so we don't take away time from Tomy Massage to protect their due process.
I believe that we still have about three minutes left for you. Is there any additional comment you would like to make at this time?
I just, Mr. Lang is understanding the, the business, it's, it needs to have licensed therapist to, to run the business and perform the massages, and he have corrected the mistakes. He have invested in the community and bought the business, and obviously, he signed a three-year lease, and he like to see the business stay open. He will do whatever it takes to comply, again, with the city ordinance and with the, with the state. So, he feel the punishment is a little harder than what it should have been.
One more question, please.
He's still going to be running it from remotely, then, correct?
Well, he have, he's gonna move here, and he's gonna hire, maybe bring a partner on board or hire a manager to help him run it properly, but I don't know, he's, he's traveling back and forth still.
Far away is he?
From, from New York. Yeah.
Thank you. That ends your, we'll reserve, we'll call it two and a half minutes for you now. We need it at the end, if you want to come back and say anything at the end. So, you still have two minutes in there. All right, so, from a township perspective, Sergeant Trader, could you come to the podium, and that way, we can re-ask the questions and have it on the official record. I think you were speaking to the separation between the legal criminal and the ordinance issuer. Ray Marie, was your question correct?
Yes, correct. Right, yeah. So, how is it separated? I mean, they're only going to court for the one issue, for the... I mean, they're only going to court for the one issue, for the non-license.
When the complaint came in, we had, we have a victim of, you know, an alleged inappropriate sex act. Through that investigation, it was learned that the business had some ordinance-type violations. That's where those two misdemeanors are coming from because she was, appears to be, from what our investigation shows, unlicensed and unregistered with the township, which is required through ordinance. So anytime that someone gets a new employee that's a therapist, they must provide that name to the township to update, what I call their roster and then show that they have a license through the state. So those were the, those were the violations that were directed at the owner of the business.
But there's still another issue pending?
Correct, yeah, correct. It's still under review by the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. So they're kind of two different things.
Was a ticket issued to the therapist directly?
No, again, it's written in the ordinance that the owner of the business is, needs to be in control of that, provide that information, so it's...
By both four, not the young lady. So the young lady's presence or non-presence means nothing in the process at this point.
Correct, what the owner was cited for, as far as that goes, there's no relevance to that. Her role, I mean, she just, you know, is the criminal side, she also, if she was licensed, couldn't...
Fair as well. Got it. So we had somebody come to the Public Safety Department, file a complaint. We went in and once we went in, we discovered we've got these other ordinance issues to be...
Correct, it was on a review of some documents and we were able to identify her, et cetera.
Clerk, have any comments or...
Oh, just to repeat what Steve said, this establishment has a history.
Correct.
And it ain't good. It goes back to February of 2011.
Correct, my personal experience, I was supervisor.
2014, 2016, 2017, 2018. And now we're here today and the owner isn't here. Okay.
Is there a question in there, John?
The question is, your, the criminal case is proceeding against the owner.
There's a, the criminal case is against, that depends how you want, what you want to call criminal, but there's a, a local ordinance was written, two violations to the owner, okay? That'll be handled in the 35th District Court.
35, okay.
He, suspect in this case would be the massage therapist. That portion of the investigation is under review at the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office and has been for about three weeks now.
Local case is pending. Okay. One in 35th District Court and one with the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office downtown.
Correct.
That hasn't, has a warrant been issued in that case or...
As of today, we checked, there's nothing been issued yet.
And on top of that, we've got our ordinance situation here tonight.
Peter?
In my opinion, the business hasn't been conducted in a professional manner up to now and it's concerning to me that we have these issues coming back year after year. There was also, can you, I don't know if you can speak to last year's issues that were cited? The violation for advertisements and the cot there?
Yeah, I was the supervisor of the ordinance department up until a couple of weeks ago and part of our, I guess we'll call it routine maintenance, we would review social media sites just to see if, what type of advertising was going on, as we received several complaints from the communities about these type of establishments. And I know from time to time that they were advised to take them down as there was pictures on there of people that were suggesting that they're employees but were not employed there. So those types of things were going on.
Director Meyer, would you like to make some comments?
I think just real quick, I provided a timeline to the board tonight and I understand what the gentleman just spoke to in terms of the potential of owner transfer sometime in or about 2017, but I think what's important to point out tonight is taking out all the timeline maybe prior to this owner taking over ownership, we've had three incidents in 2017. Two of those incidents involved employees either being asked to or voluntarily attempting to perform sex acts on customers. So I think that's, that's important to point out and two of those incidents would have occurred under the current ownership.
Any additional board comment, commentary, question?
Well, I, if I can, I mean, I think it's also important to note, like, you know, why do we have a state law that requires that massage therapists be licensed? And part of the reason that that law was enacted was because at times these establishments can act as subterfuges for other types of activity and so they wanted it to be well-regulated and that's why we built into our local ordinance the fact that, one, every massage therapist must be licensed, two, they must have a list, up-to-date list of all of the therapists who are licensed, and three, there must be no illegal activity, whether condoned or otherwise, happening on the presence because these are a lightning rod for this kind of activity. So the fact that the ordinance has been disregarded in those three specific areas brings me cause for concern outside of the other, you know, anonymous tips that we receive from people in the community about, you know, services that were offered and then culminating in this final, this final incident. So we have an ordinance and it's there for a reason.
Stephen?
Oh, is there at some point we'd be able to give like an opinion or something like that?
Yeah, that's next step is...
I'll wait for that.
Give the owner's representative two minutes, if you'd like to say any additional comments and then from there, the board will have to choose one of the three motions to move forward.
Hello, so I was looking at, you know, I didn't have an opportunity, even though when I was involved with Tumi, I have this list, but if you really look at the list of the violations, it's two of them is regarding certificate of occupancy. So it's not really any kind of misconduct. And then in regards to advertising, I think, in all fairness, and I think a lot of the businesses, a lot of them, you know, massage therapy places advertise on back page and which, that was shut down by FBI and, you know, throughout across the country and across the world. So, and that was a way of advertising for them, maybe, you know, that was just more of a trend than, than what really took place at Tumi Massage. I think in fairness, it's false advertisement, you know, that could be an issue and that was an issue with the previous owner, I think, and I think they resolved that issue, you know, with a warning. They're trying to run a legitimate business and I hope you guys recognize that and I hope, and I hope from here on out that the owner, you know, will participate more hands-on and operate day-to-day and have a better understanding of who's working there and working with their therapist and provide help to the community with stress release. I mean, that's the bottom line, it's, it is what it is, you know, and there are complaints and people's going to complain and like, for example, this incident, I think there's another side to the story. It doesn't really make a whole lot of sense for an individual to go in and get an hour massage and pay for it and leave a $10 tip and turn around and make a complaint. It just didn't make sense to me. Thank you.
Those before a final motion or to deliberate or do we deliberate while we're still in the open hearing?
Are we...
We're to the point now, in terms of process, is there somebody would like to take a lead in terms of which direction they feel we should go? Yeah, go ahead, Diane.
I mean, I have big concerns since 2011 until now, I mean, certificate of occupancy isn't very important, along with the other misleading marketing advertisements and inappropriate sexual acts. I just, I have an issue, even though the owner has changed, it seems like nobody had been monitoring it, so I really, I have big concerns about allowing the business to continue. I mean, I don't know how everyone else feels, but these are pretty strong complaints from 2011 until now.
If I may, just jumping on, because what we're talking about here is a 2018 massage establishment license, which will expire in two months. Feel like I, okay. The applicant would be able to reapply in January regardless of which one of these options we choose. So what we're really debating here is, do we allow them to operate tomorrow? Do we give them, you know, do we, do we do the temporary suspension of the 2018 massage establishment license, assuming it's going to be adjudicated in the next two months, which I think it's not? And then the other option is, do we permanently revoke the 2018 license, which they get to apply in two more months for a new license anyway? So to me, you know, I don't really feel like, you know, two months is not, is a very short amount of time and they get another shot at reapplying and it depends on what public safety, the building official and my office decide to recommend and, or probably, you know, so I would be, I would be comfortable with option number one and just saying, let them reset again in 2019.
I agree. Diane Marie, John, any comments? John? John?
I agree with everybody and like Diane said, CFO, certificate of occupancy is only two of them, but in every other one, it's advertise sexually, sexual suggestive advertising, you know, it's, it's more than that. And it still concerns me that we have an owner that lives 700 miles, 800 miles away. I mean, it's hard to watch an establishment like that and especially because this has happened already. It also puts you under the radar more, you know, you really have to watch this place more and, you know, we have people around that establishment that live there and, you know, kids in the neighborhood and so this is, it is alarming that we still, that we had this happening. So no, I would agree that, now when they're talking about, I just want to clarify for process, it's the pending outcome of our court action, that's just for the ordinance, that's not for the criminal part of it, okay? And so what would happen if there, well, if there was a criminal part, it wouldn't be against the massage part, it would be against the therapist, correct? Is that correct? Okay. Yeah, so I would, I would, I agree with going towards option one more.
Okay, very good. I'll call for a...
Can I say one more thing?
Steve, yeah, please.
Yeah, well, first of all, you asked, I think we will close, you are going to close first and then...
Yeah, close and then we'll do the motion.
Yeah, I think what's in front of us is the ordinance violation and I have no problem going with option one just on the basis of the ordinance violation. I don't think any of, any of these facilities in our community should have unlicensed massage therapists. I think that should be right there enough to close them down temporarily. This is the second one, I think, we've had since this board has been seating, seated. So, I mean, if you can spread word in your community that this could, in the massage therapy community, that this could be a problem for you if you do it, don't do it because this is what happens. So I have no problem going with option one just on that basis alone.
Right, that being said, and call for a motion to close the special hearing.
So moved.
Second? Those in favor of the motion to close the special hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now call for a motion, reading of motion number one.
Supervisor, I move to, I move that the termination of the board trustees upon hearing all the evidence submitted and reviewing documents is to deny the appeal and uphold the supervisor's temporary suspension and revoke the 2018 massage establishment license for Tumi acupressure massage. The applicant may reapply January of 2019. I'm going to edit my typo there and put in 2019 in my motion.
Second? Favor the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Those opposed to the motion, state aye. Say none, carries, thank you. Moving on to consent calendar, which I will ask Clerk Segras when he's ready to read as a single motion.
All right, Mr. Supervisor, I move that the board adopt the consent calendar with only one item. C1, consider approval of payment of the annual software license fees to Keriworks for the on-base document management.
Okay, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now moving into the general calendar, item G1, consider approval of a, nope, we revised so we're going to item four first as item zero. So, item four. This, I think we've talked about quite a bit over the past several months, including in the study session. Consider sale of Canton property and authorize myself to sign all documents necessary to close on the sale.
Mr. Supervisor, I move that Canton accept the letter of intent from Peter Stanek and authorize yourself, Supervisor Williams, to sign the formal purchase agreement and any other documents necessary to complete the sale of the parcel located east of Willard Street and to the west of the ITC corridor.
Support.
Good. In terms of background, Mr. Stanek and his neighbors along the ITC corridor have offered, let's see, $4,000. Mr. Stanek tends to use the additional land to extend the family's garden and provide more backyard play space for his daughters. He's also interested in the possibility of someday adding a swimming pool at his home. He'd now like to purchase the third vacant lot owned, identified in your package this evening behind his property, so the three of them can be combined into one for an additional $2,000. The letter of intent has been reviewed by Kristen Cold and should the board approve the letter of intent, the formal purchase agreement will be drafted and then signed by myself. Are there any board questions regarding this item?
I have a question. I'm seeing this letter from the neighbor and you received that from him?
Yeah, absolutely. If you look at the maps, there's a, one of my big concerns was there's, I'm trying to remember the other neighbor's name, but doesn't matter, who had bought the parcels behind him already. Now this neighbor's coming in and doing the same thing and there's a tiny overlap of the third piece to the north that goes over his neighbor's backyard. And the neighbor's given us a letter saying, it's okay to sell this little piece to my neighbor, I don't have a problem with it, with it. So he's saying it's okay to have the overlap.
I had personally met with the neighbor and gave him my word that I wouldn't sell the property behind his house to anybody, but I see the letter from, from Gomisindo, so I guess I'm comfortable. I don't believe that was the parcel that was in question in the first place anyway, so I just don't want to have...
It's good that the neighbors are working with each other on this one. Okay, any other, yes, Stephen?
Mr. Supervisor, I see we sold the other two pieces a couple, a month or two ago and for $4,000 and this will be $6,000. So I was wondering, I don't know if we need to do this in the motion or not, I'm not looking for that, but can we put that money in the parks like we did for the, the other land that we sold to...
I can see Director Holmberger's got a big grin on his face, I will not preface that grin.
I just think land belongs in...
Director Trumbull, do we have any issues with making that commitment on this $2,000, $6,000?
And if you want to come back with an answer...
Yeah, we can come back to you because I don't think anybody on the board would oppose that, but I don't know, Wendy, do you want to offer any comments?
No, the only other suggestion that I would have is, we're going to be seeing the budget in a couple of weeks here. We're in the middle of a CIP plan where we're likely going to have millions of...
Millions and millions of dollars required.
That are not budgeted for at this point in time, $6,000, if that's what the board chooses to do, we can absolutely dedicate that, similar to the other one. I just would caution that we have a lot of capital needs that, that we need to address.
Okay, let's talk about it. I don't think there's any rush to answer that question, but it just seemed, oh, go ahead, Pat.
I was just thinking that it may pay one one-hundredth of his new roof that Greg also needs over at the summit, so...
Yeah, I mean, I just think that, you know, it's land and we like to take the land and apply it where it's more commonly being able to be used by everyone in the community, so take the money. I know we're talking tonight about purchasing land for a park, so, just a thought I had.
Right, seeing no additional comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we go back to item G1, which is related to this item. It's back in sequence here. It's back in sequence here. Consider approval of a reduced application fee for the property combination off Willard Road.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the agreement with Wayne County to provide-
Oh?
I read the wrong. Supervisor, I move to approve a reduced fee of $125, plus 75 per lot for the proposed property combination at 556 Z North Willard Road.
Second? In brief, now that we've sold these parcels to the gentleman, he is now would like to legally combine them, so Tim's team put together some numbers on, or someone from staff, on what it would be to cover our cost to do this alone, as opposed to any additional coverages of overhead costs, and that's what we're offering here, is give the guy who just bought the land a break so he can consolidate it. Okay, that's what this is for. Are there any board questions? Nope, seeing none. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
When's the pool party?
When's the pool, I don't know when the pool party is. Okay, moving on, item G2, consider approval of an agreement with Wayne County to provide winter maintenance on eight miles, or six, 15.65 lane miles of country roads.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the agreement with Wayne County to provide an additional winter maintenance for eight miles or 15.65 lane miles of county local roads, and authorize the payment of $24,868.57 from account number 101-447-03.801_0050, Engineering Redway Maintenance Professional and Contractual Services, and authorize the township clerk to sign the agreement resolution on behalf of Canton.
Court? Under this agreement, county crews will provide the same level of service, the additional eight miles or 15.65 lane miles of local paved roads as presently provides on the primary paved roads, if the township will partially reimburse the county for this added service. Township share of this cost for 2018-19 is presented here at $1,589.05 per lane mile. The cost is based on last year's cost and how we have historically agreed to determining the prices for these services. It represents 50% of the cost, or cost for county forces to perform the service. I think, Tim, as we continue to build out on the west side, maybe we go through the process we went through to reduce the number of lane miles as we finish up some of these big developments that are going on, it may be time to ask again, but that basically is what we're doing here, it's that time of year. Are there any board questions?
I have a question. How long has, how long have we been doing this agreement for? Do we know?
I think it's been more than two decades. In the background, you can see at least some of what I'd call the more recent history, I'm just scrolling there real quick for you. Lower page, there you go. There's our historic cost since 2003, so we've only been tracking it by way of this table since that point in time, but-
Prior to this agreement, would it be safe to say that the maintenance on these roads was not completed, or?
Winter maintenance?
Yeah.
Yes, at some point, I'm not sure when, I think, you know, it's probably been 25 years that we've been doing this.
Very first board meeting, and I got into an argument with Tom Yak on this process. You may be thinking the same thoughts I had back in 2008, Michael. All right, seeing no further questions, comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G3. Consider award of contractor Northwest Consultants Incorporated for professional engineering services for the 2019 road improvement program.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve two purchase order contracts with Northwest Consultants Incorporated for the 2019 asphalt and 2019 concrete road projects to Northwest Consultants Incorporated in the amount of $230,000, $230,660, plus a contingency of $10,000, for a total not to exceed $240,660 under the professional services agreement. The first purchase order is for 2018 expenses in an amount not to exceed $100,000, and the second purchase order is for 2019 for the remainder of the $140,066.
Recently, the township board approved a budget amendment, 250, to commence the engineering designs and program management for the 2019 improvement program. The engineering services staff issued two short form requests, proposals of our seven, from our seven pre-qualified engineering consultants in August 30, 2018. One proposal request was for the design, inspection, testing, construction, engineering of concrete roads, the other was for asphalt, anticipating this is how the township would eventually bid the work in early 2019. Director Foss has put up on the screen what our projected programs are going to be for 2019, which is unchanged since before the ballot proposal in August.
Actually, one small change, this, this one piece of back road near Hanford, we found out a couple weeks ago that the county is actually going to perform that asphalt work on its, with its own forces, so that's $100,000 that comes out of our list, which we're shifting to the dashed purple lines, which were Hanford and Salts.
Also, another little bit of good news that just came in today, unrelated to this board item, is Joe Barone, on behalf of Canton Township, has found another $360,000 to go on top of the 388 committed for this year for neighborhood roads, so, another, again, not related to this board item, but it is the good news coming.
Committed to next 2019?
Well, the, Tim, that's a good question, is what we got the good news from Commissioner's office today, that's, he said this year's budget, but obviously, can we do, we're not ready to go into, it'll have to be spent next year, right? Next spring?
Yeah, so when they speak in that terms, I presume that's the 2018-2019 fiscal year for the county. So this budget year that's starting now for Wayne County, they're not on a calendar fiscal year, they're on a different fiscal year, so these dashed purple lines, Hanford and Salts, are the projects that we had targeted with that money initially, so this will help us, if you're not aware, the total estimated cost for those projects is, I'm not doing that, by the way, that's the computer just doing some strange stuff, but the total cost for these projects was estimated a little bit under $1 million, and previously, the county committed 388, so this money will go a long ways to meeting our required commitment.
We're down there, there, perfect.
I have a question for finance on this one, so the $100,000 that's going to be for 2018 expenses, I didn't remember that we had approved putting money into the roads, I just didn't know that there was $100,000 in a, in a roads fund for '18, how does that work?
A couple meetings ago, we took a, we brought a budget amendment, and we actually did all the budget amendments. We transferred money from general fund into the road fund to cover that, and in the 2019 budget that you'll see in a couple weeks, you'll see that we already recorded that as a transfer back out from the road fund as soon as the property tax money comes in for 2019.
Okay, but still, just to clarify, especially for those at home, we have yet to collect any of the revenue for, in the form of taxes, to be spent on the road, so this is additional 2018, ideally surplus revenue that we have.
It's a loan.
It's a loan, okay. But I'm excited nonetheless, for anybody who's saying, you know, we passed this millage, why haven't we fixed the roads? Well, we got to get the money first, and now the design.
Long-term plan, it's not overnight, guys, long-term.
Right.
Seeing no additional board comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G5, because we've already handled four, consider approval of the municipal credit agreement with Suburban Mobility Authority for regional transportation, otherwise known as SMART.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the 2018-2019 municipal credit contract between SMART and the Charter Township of Canton for $88,692, and to authorize yourself, the township supervisor, to sign the contract on behalf of the township.
Second? We submitted our annual municipal credit program application with SMART to provide funding to Canton Mobility Transportation. SMART has notified the township that we are eligible in the amount identified under the program running from July 2018 through June 2019. Leisure Services requesting the township board to approve the municipal credit funding agreement with SMART and to allow municipal credit funds to be transferred to the Nankin Transit Commission to manage the Canton Mobility Transportation Program. The Nankin Transit Commission was approved by the board of trustees, but to be our transportation service provider on June 26, 2018, if you'll remember. Are there any additional board comments, questions? Go ahead, Stephen.
I thought we'd get more than this, or is this something different?
We get two separate grants, we get the, this is a municipal credit program grant, and then there's an additional grant, I'm blanking out on the name of the second grant.
That's up to $300,000, $400,000 total, right?
No, it's about, it's about $100,000, a little over $100,000 between the two.
Pat, don't you remember that we get more?
I remember bigger numbers too, but I could be mixing apples with oranges.
Maybe.
That's the total program cost, maybe that you're thinking of, and then this offsets a portion of that cost, and the other portion is offset by general fund.
Okay, got it.
That's it.
Thank you.
Yep, that makes much better sense. Okay?
How's the new Nankin transportation working out as opposed to what we had before?
It's been very successful. We've had some bumps in the road with any transition that we have, it's a very large program, but they are seeing a very high demand, and the ridership has increased significantly, which may lead to a future board action, just because of demand, but they're, based on the rides that they've been given, their annual rides would be up a little over 35% from what we were giving through HVA, so a little over, I think about 7,000 additional rides is what they're looking at annually, based on the amount of rides that they've been giving to Canton residents so far. Very successful.
Think that the expansion of the hours has helped improve that, also that we're allowing transportation to local SMART drop-offs?
I don't know for sure, I'd have to, we have our first, one of our first quarterly updates with them and the residents coming up in the next week, so once we have that meeting, we'll have a little bit more information about the specifics.
They estimate it from the general fund that we would have to use that you just said a few minutes ago?
I'd looked at the numbers, I think it's 319 is general-
319,000 from the general fund.
19 plus the 100 gets to Steve's 400.
Which is about 70 or 80,000 less than what we were previously spending with HVA.
No further questions or comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G6, consider authorization to purchase new cardio equipment.
This is in the form of two motions. Mr. Supervisor, I move to authorize the purchase of seven pieces of fitness equipment from Direct Fitness Solutions at 600 Tower Road in Mundalane, Illinois, 60060, in the amount of $31,512.
Okay, requests for proposals were solicited in September of '18 for new cardio equipment for the summit on the Park Fitness Center. From this solicitation, four fitness equipment providers submitted bids, as identified in the packet, Direct Fitness Solutions was the only company to provide a complete bid for the specific equipment requested. The other three vendors submitted bids with alternate equipment as part of their bid, were deemed not equivalent or incomplete. Leisure Services recommending the purchase of these pieces from Direct Fitness Solutions in the amount identified. Are there any board questions? Okay, seeing none. Those in favor of the first motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Second motion.
Supervisor, I further move to authorize the following budget transfer, $31,512 from the account number listed for the lease payments to the account number listed for capital outlay machinery and equipment.
Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to item G7, consider approval of Village Theater microphone and backstage communication repla, communications replacement.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following budget, actually, I'm going to do it in reverse, so I'm going to do the purchase and the budget. Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the bid for replacement of all microphones and backstage wireless communication devices operating within the prohibited frequency ranges at the Village Theater from Vintage King at 1176 West Sunset Boulevard in Los Angeles, California, 902, 9012, 90012, in the amount of $31,236,093, with funds to be paid from the account number listed.
Good. In summary, and I'm just glancing at this, this is kind of spicy, the media may pick up on this one. In April of 2017, the FCC announced the results of auctioning off the 600 millihertz, megahertz frequency spectrum. Wireless microphones and backstage communication devices are one of the largest users of the spectrum. Spectrum will become illegal to use beginning January 13, 2020, and may experience interference beginning in 2018. Many of the backstage communications used at the Village Theater are within this frequency range and need to be replaced. The Village Theater currently has Sure brand microphones, and would like to take advantage of a turn-in program currently being offered. This offer will credit up to $250 per microphone towards another Sure brand product. This request includes the replacement of all microphones and backstage wireless communication devices operating within the prohibited frequency ranges. Again, Leisure Services recommending Vintage King as the vendor. Are there any board questions or comments? And interference from what other frequencies coming from where? Maybe not, we don't have the technical expertise to respond to that, but-
I believe it's, has, Josh might know more, if it's law enforcement frequencies, I don't know.
Next gen 911 coming in at a different frequency? I don't know.
Maybe the 800 megahertz radios.
That's not a fair question of you guys this evening, so, we're just, we're being told we can no longer operate in that bandwidth, so.
Saying do the mobile industry, so I'm wondering, just-
Yeah, it says in the background, mobile industry. So it could be for automated, autonomous vehicles and things like that, perhaps.
Space cars are jacking up their speakers. Okay. Any additional board comments, questions? Seeing none, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, second.
Mr. Supervisor, I further move to approve the following budget amendment, a decrease in the expenses to the transfer to fund balance account in the amount of $31,236.93, and an increase in expenses to the capital outlay computers and equipment account for the same amount, $31,236.93.
Right. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item G8, consider approval of asphalt paving of Cherry Hill Path to I-275 Metro Trail.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the contract with Hutch Paving Incorporated at 3,000 East Ten Mile Road in Warren, Michigan, 48091, for asphalt paving of Cherry Hill Path to I-275 Metro Trail in the amount of $74,854, plus a contingency of 5%, which is $3,743, totaling $78,597, to be paid from Community Development Block Grant Account Number Listed for 72,600, and the remaining $5,997 out of the account number listed.
Court? Due to the thoroughness of that motion, what, all I'm going to say is this completes our pathway to the Wayne, city of Wayne border, or is this the other one?
No, this is the other one that will go along Cherry Hill Road from the I-275 Trail to the east.
From Cherry Hill to I-275.
Along Cherry Hill.
Along Cherry Hill to the I-275 pathway.
Correct.
On the east side of 275?
Yes.
Yeah. Then, we've been talking about that one for a while, has it just been pushed off the budget?
Basically a GOAT path right now.
Yeah, pushed off the budget for a few years, or, okay.
Approved through CDBG for funding.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
That's why-
Looking forward to it.
The majority of this is being paid for through CDBG, we just need the little excess from Director Foss's budget to-
What a good man.
Seeing no further board comments, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That was one motion, correct?
Correct.
Nine, consider approval of budget amendment for funding a northeast- Nine, consider approval of budget amendment for funding a northeast quadrant park.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the following, I move to authorize the following budget amendment. Increase revenues to the Community Improvement Miscellaneous Revenue Account for one hundred sixty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars, and increase expenses to the Community Improvement Professional Services Account Number Listed for nine thousand, and transfer to fund balance for one hundred and fifty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Second. November of 2017, the board approved the sale of property with net proceeds to be dedicated to a park to be developed on the east side of Canton someday. Canton Leisure Services has identified a park location in the northeast quadrant of Canton along Copper Nick Road. The property development will require a property split and a property transfer agreement. In order to develop an agreement for a future request for board action, consulting services will be required to develop property transfer agreements and a park conception plan. Therefore, Leisure Services requesting a budget amendment to recognize the revenue of the sale of the property and increase in expenses to cover the preliminary work to be done in 2018, the balance of the funds are planned to be used in 2019. And just a little more history, this, this is a parcel of land that is being donated to us by the developer of the apartment complex at Copper Nick and Hagerty, and the piece is adjacent to Holiday Park subdivision, which was the very first subdivision in Canton Township back in the day before they even thought about neighborhood parks. So this, this neighborhood is finally gonna have a little walk-to park for the youngsters from that neighborhood, in addition to the nature preserve they've got across the street, which is pretty cool. Are there any board questions, comments? Kidding.
Is this, I'm sorry, was this, is this Mr. Berry's property, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Land will be given to the township by Danny Berry, and also he's gonna give us four or five parking spots that we do have to pay for the cement and work construction, work for the parking spots. So there'll be some cash going back to him at some point for the park, small amount.
Depends on where the parking spots end up. It may end up within the boundaries of the properties that, that he's giving us, so then that would just be constructed as part of the park when we did that.
Well, then I can just say, one, I'm grateful that Danny Berry has provided us this property. I understand it's a, it's a good mutual benefit situation where the residents of, future residents of the apartment complex will have access to some green space and a park, and then we get to put in a park in a, in a targeted area we've been looking for. So I'm excited to see that. So congratulations to everybody involved, and, and again, thank you to the developer for working with the township so we could get this done. This is great.
Go ahead, Emery.
One thing also, this is just for the park, the cost for the park, this wouldn't include any amenities we would put in the park, correct?
The, the nine thousand dollar budget that we're doing right now, yes. So that would just be for the legal piece of the property split, as well as some concept designs from an architect, because what we want to do is have concept designs drawn up by an architect, we'll have a few different options drawn up, and then we'll have a public meeting with the residents specifically targeting those folks so that we can get their input on what they like, don't like about those concept designs before we come up with a final plan to actually use the balance of those funds, that hundred and fifty-four, for construction of the projects. I know Director Trumbull had some ideas for CDBG funds as well.
Yeah, we've been looking to close out the NSP program for some time, and we got about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in there. This area of the township is, qualifies for us to be able to build a park using the NSP dollars that are left over. So we may not in the end use these dollars to fund this project. At the end, we might end up using the NSP dollars. So we're, we're talking about it at this point in time. So while we say we've got this money, we also have another two hundred and fifty thousand, which we are required to close out. The government's gonna ask us soon what we're planning on using these monies for, and this might be something we bring forward to the board as a suggestion.
Great, the residents will be very excited. Thank you.
Other thing is, you knock your socks off when you see the price tags on some of this equipment.
Oh, yeah, we, my Kiwanis Club, we did a, an entire play structure in downtown Plymouth, and the cost for this, I was, like a house, like buying a house.
They also have some good grants and some of the, park matching grants for some of these parks I've seen in some of the publications, so that should help too.
There you go. Okay, seeing no further comment, those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. That was a single motion, yes?
Yes, sir.
Okay, G ten is our last item, I believe. We have consider authorizing agreement of phase two for, of architectural services for Fire Station Two and associated amendment to the 2018 fire budget.
This is in the form of two motions, Mr. Supervisor. I move to approve authorizing of the Partners in Architecture Phase Two Agreement for Architectural Services of Fire Station Number Two in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
There you go. Okay, Partners in Architecture, Architecture has prepared an agreement for Phase Two, Fire Station Number Two Reconstruction Project. This agreement is broken into four tasks, design, development, construction documentation, bidding, construction administration, FEMA letter of map amendment, and the details for the tasks all can be found in the attachment in the board packet. We recently had our study session out at the Fire, Fire Station Two with the Partners in Architecture, and the, this is in line with the, the information we shared that evening in terms of dollar values, et cetera. Are there any board questions, comments? Seeing none.
I, I'll make a quick comment, just, you know, I think this is fantastic, I just, and moving forward, I, I know I saw some back and forth with Director, Director Meyer talking about, you know, and there was a request from a board member asking about the potential of, of implementing some type of alternative energy component to this. I think as we move forward as a society, that would be a great opportunity for us to, to look into that. So I, it sounds like there's some willingness, if, you know, we can crunch some numbers and see if it makes good, a good sense, and I look forward to that.
There is some preliminary cost information we pulled together. The benefit side has not been quantified yet, so again, more work to be done. But we're, we're moving forward with the request to identify opportunities based on Emery's list. No additional comments, questions, those in favor of the motions presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have a second motion.
Supervisor, I move to approve the following listed budget adjustment to the 2018 fire budget to utilize fund balance for this expense.
Court. Those in favor of the second motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. That concludes our formal business. Is there any additional public comment? Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, staff, directors, team, any comments, suggestions, things coming up, exciting stuff.
Pirquet Creek Trail is coming up on, I can tell you.
Friday?
October twenty-sixth.
Yes, and my team has been challenged to help out with that, so we'll, we'll be the monopoly game, so we're looking forward to it.
Very exciting. We'll look forward to having you.
We have scary stories at the Katie Boyer barn this weekend, too. I like going to that.
Spooky fun coming soon. Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Believe it or not, today is, well, for those of us, those of you watching at home, it might be later, but it is October ninth, which is the close of registration for the November election. I can tell you that we have surpassed sixty-seven thousand registered voters here in Canton Township. We have been very busy the last couple of weeks doing voter registration, so it's going to be an exciting election this November, and, and it's important, so thank you, it is, and, yeah.
Exciting.
Exciting.
Very exciting. Okay, yes, Stephen.
Two quick things, one is my wife and I went back to the summit after having been on vacation for a while, and we really loved the landscaping that was done in front of the summit, adds a nice touch to it, and also the curbless drop-off area is, looks really nice, and I think that probably helps with ADA things, so I thought that was very nice. And second, for those of you who thought that I was a bad friend to friends, proof of that I am not, is that when a friend comes from out of town, where do you bring them? To a board meeting. So my friend Blaine Gerber has visited us tonight.
For soul.
He's from, he's from North Carolina, but he's a former resident of Canton, so I wanted to welcome him to our board meeting.
Very cool.
All right. Know him?
And he admits it.
Done. He was on the trip. Check his tags.
I know. I have a picture.
Okay, I think this calls for a kind of a motion to adjourn.
I moved.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Good night, everybody, be safe.